That's good.
So we're here. All right, I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call please. Councilor Minister Mary.
I'm here.
Councilor Special Agent.
President.
Mayor Derron.
Here.
Councilor General Manager.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Here.
All right, moving on, um, I did not receive any public comment. Let me rephrase that. Um, we do have one person signed up for a public comment, um, Kelly Fane, if you'd like to step up, please state your name for the record and then you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Kelly Fane and I'm supposed to say thank you for letting me talk. So I'm here on behalf of my neighbor's kids asking when the skateboard park would be open. You guys did lots of work on it today. They're really excited. And from the kids at Cripple Creek Community Church, I represent the little boys.
Well, November eighth, they're out there working.
Okay, thank you.
November eighth.
Very close.
Yeah, we're all excited.
Thank you, Kelly. All right, moving on to approval of, uh, meeting minutes from the October fifteenth regular meeting, has council had an opportunity to review? Any changes or revisions needed? All right, can I get a motion, please?
Make a reasonable change.
But I did receive the.
We did give you the new minutes?
Yes.
Tell them what the change was.
Yeah, no, I told.
Okay. Does everybody know?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, thank you. No, you're good. Uh, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve. The October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Vote please. Councilor Minister Mary.
Yes.
Councilor Special Agent.
Yeah. Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Derron. Yes. All right, moving on to reports, City Administrator Frank Salton.
I'm getting my reports to you, Mayor. Go ahead.
I'm good. Hmm? Oh, the what we, my piece? Okay, uh, thank you. I thought you were just joking earlier.
No, I wasn't joking.
All right, so.
You can have my reports, bro.
Thank you. Um, so there's just, um, two things I would like to, um, touch upon. Number one, for those who are not aware, uh, former mayor, longtime resident Milford Ashworth, um, passed away on October eighteenth. He was instrumental in this community. Um, I, I first met him and his wife, Yveta, when I was playing, started playing organ at Saint Andrews Episcopal Church back in twenty fifteen. He was also a huge supporter of the trades programs at the school, and I know that all council members, you all have a, an ex- a relationship with Milford, so I just wanted to open up the opportunity, um, if anybody wanted to have any comments.
I was, I served with, uh, Milford on council, but I don't know the years, so. I didn't, I got to know Milford really well, and he was a really good guy. Did a lot for the community, and he also just, he's over at Victor as well.
At the museum, yeah.
Really good guy, but at least he was able to be back home with his family and his grandkids. So, he's a good guy.
Yeah, I, I've known Milford since I was a little kid. I used to know his lawn as a little kid, uh, all the time, and his neighbors all the time. Loved Milford, loved his wife. Good people.
Yeah, I was neighbors with them for the whole time they lived here. Most of the time they lived here. Really good guy.
Yeah, I met Milford. Going way back to the Dan Bader days, and we would have the, after council, council meetings at the Red Rooster.
Oh, I hear about those. Darren, tell her to be quiet, I'm here now.
I reviewed myself.
And, uh, um, I was always grateful to him for making me pro Tem for his term, and then when he resigned, became the Although Acting, just female mayor of Cripple Creek. I, yeah, he believed in me and I will always be grateful.
So, thank you, I just wanted to give you the opportunity.
Good to me. I mean, he was always, you know how much time you spend in the office and us going over things. Milford was always a way. He would go to meetings, I'd go pick him up, we'd go to wherever we needed to be. He was on his oxygen up here, which he wanted to get off of. So I think he got to do that when he moved back. But getting back with his family was important, too. He was gonna try to last through the end of the year, and I said, Milford, you need, family first. If you need to quit and move, you don't have to serve your, I mean, it was like two, three months?
Two, three and a half months, I think.
So he went ahead and resigned and moved back, so.
I'm just so grateful you had that opportunity to leave his family for the last couple of years, so, um, he will be missed, so, thank you, guys.
He was an outstanding human being.
He was.
He had an amazing common sense, sense of common sense, and he had an amazing confidence in people and a hope in accomplishing the best. So, it was quite a pleasure to serve the Lord under Milford.
Well, thank you, guys, I appreciate that. Um, secondly, I just want to extend my heartfelt thanks to the voters of Cripple Creek for approving the formation of the Home Rule Charter Commission. I'm just so excited that the community at least has the opportunity to see what that can look like. The Charter Commission definitely has their work cut out for them over the next six months as they write that charter. Public is allowed to attend all of the meetings, and so I just want to strongly encourage the public to attend as many meetings as you can, so that this is truly a community effort. And once the, um, the schedule is set for the meetings, I would like to send out notification for that, because I, I would just love to see as much public participation in that process as possible. I'm gonna be honest with you, I had no idea how it was gonna turn out last night. I, I just didn't know. And so, did I do a happy dance and make a lot of phone calls from my kitchen afterward? I called you, um, I called you, I texted, yeah. So anyway, just, just thank you so much for, for having faith and at least giving us a chance to see what this can mean for us, and so, um, that's all I wanted to say about that, so. Onward to Finance Director Moni Edwards, because you haven't talked enough yet already. We shall see you next time, so thank you. And thank you for all of your work on the budget. I, I can't even imagine. So I won't even try, but, but thank you.
It'll be much easier.
Yes.
Because it'll all be in this software.
Yeah.
They'll just upload email files and it'll, it'll be worth it.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, moving on to presentations. First, we have SSR Cripple Creek and Victor Mining Gold Company, and this is the quarterly presentation, I believe, so. Who's up first?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, so Bjorn Meyer, I am the General Manager CCNV Mining Company. So I'd like to open our presentation with a value share. The next slide. All right, so one of the main issues, uh, facing society here in the recent few weeks and months has been the issue with food, with food insecurity. And with that said, uh, CCNV Mining has responded to the charge by, uh, contributing fifty-five thousand dollars to local, uh, food banks and resource centers here recently, because we know it is a significant, uh, uh, situation that is affecting a lot of our local members here, so, you know, we are very glad we're able to support that effort. And it does embody our motto of better together, one of our core values, so we are very glad we're able to offer those funds immediately. And these funds will help and support families across Teller County, and, um, hopefully things work out with the government in the next few weeks, so we can get back to, uh, you know, business as usual, so.
Thank you for that contribution.
Yes, thank you so much.
With that said, we'll turn over the presentation to Josh. To chat about water maturity.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, like Bjorn said, my name's Josh Adams. I'm the, uh, site water coordinator at CCNV. Um, I've been at CCNV for just over two and a half years now, um, and I appreciate the, uh, time you guys have given us to talk tonight. So I want to talk a little bit about water, um, since it's a big, growing, evolving topic in the state of Colorado. So, water maturity at CCNV, you can think of what water maturity is like a progress chart or like a roadmap of how companies manage their water resources responsibly, responsibly. And so, within that roadmap, you have different stages and levels, and so I wanted to talk about two of those um, stages within our water maturity model, which are water efficiency and water stewardship. So for water efficiency, we aim to reduce our consumption by five percent year over year. Um, and that reduction was based on a two thousand eighteen baseline. Um, so in two thou- in twenty twenty-five, we are currently exceeding that five percent reduction, meaning we are, uh, doing less than, or doing more than five percent reduction in twenty twenty-five. Um, and so since two thousand eighteen, we've, uh, reduced our water usage by about twenty-five hundred acre feet um, since this program was implemented in two thousand eighteen. Uh, just for a quick version, uh, an acre foot of water, since that's a strange unit, is just over, um, three hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons, so, uh, pretty significant when you think about gallons there. And then, secondly, uh, we'll talk about water stewardship a little bit. Collective management actions that we maintain, um, that we use to maintain the stability of water in our watershed, so being good stewards of the upper Arkansas. Uh, making sure that we are acting in a way that's beneficial for the entire basin, not just the mine. My switch is working. Hold on, it says off, I'll turn it on.
It knows.
There you go. Um, so, this slide is showing water usage against the twenty twenty-five target. So again, that target is set as a five percent year over year reduction from the two thousand and eighteen baseline. Uh, so we got that colored line, so green, I'm gonna go with green line on the top there is the target, and red is our cumulative usage by October, so that's the most recent data, kind of a good graphical depiction of water usage at CCNV. And then my next slide here, and this will be my last slide, uh, I want to talk a little bit about, um, this fits into that water stewardship piece. Um, Trout Unlimited and their abandoned mine land program. So over the years, we've provided more than four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding the Trout Unlimited and this abandoned mine program specifically, since two thousand sixteen. Uh, which has enabled, uh, the cleanup and reclamation of twenty-five project bases across Colorado. Um, and specifically, our dollars go to, uh, Arkansas watershed projects. Uh, these funds, uh, are essential for them, because they are allowed to leverage the funds that CCNV gave Trout Unlimited to help secure grants, um, from, you know, the, from the government, whoever's providing grants for this type of work. Um, I just wanted to highlight a project that's, uh, was completed, or I don't know if they're, uh, completely done with it, but a significant portion of this work has been completed. Uh, it's the Forest Hill Mill Site. It's an eleven acre site in Upper Taylor Park, um, adjacent to Trail Creek, and so the map on top up there. Oops, no, it doesn't, but up on the top up here, uh, that map is showing, um, kind of an aerial image of where this reclaim happened. Um, they consolidated materials up there, these old mill tanks that were, you know, picked up, the roots and metals of the creek. It's all of that material, uh, put a impermeable cap on it, um, and then pre-vegetated it, so it went, it just flows into that green green water, so. Uh, just kind of an example of, um, you know, the, the work that they're doing to partner with people uh, to ensure that water stewardship piece of this maturity model, so that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Wow, I'm impressed with the reduction rate.
Yeah.
Obviously.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's a big, um, part of the water part is those every year, is making sure that we keep some intensity.
Awesome. No questions. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Turn it over to Caitlin.
I'm Caitlin Ragstil. I'm the Exman Relations Supervisor at CCNV. Um, I just want to kick off with, uh, an update about Amendment fourteen. So, as a reminder, we submitted this to Regulatory Agency, um, in April of twenty twenty-four. We received the issuance of completeness in October of twenty-four. Um, public comment ended, uh, November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, and then, uh, we did receive, um, approval with conditions from DIRMS on October first of twenty twenty-five, so the amendment will soon be submitted to Teller County Planning, uh, for their review and approval. And so what that does is, is changes. So Amendment thirteen, our current permitted mine life is twenty thirty-one for mining, twenty forty-two for processing, twenty fifty for reclamation, and twenty fifty-five for monitoring. With Amendment fourteen, that will change to, uh, twenty thirty-two for mining, so just adding one year. Uh, twenty forty-nine for processing, twenty fifty-nine for reclamation, and then twenty sixty-four for that monitoring period. What we're doing in Amendment fourteen is expanding the crusher pocket, the South Crescent pit area, and then, um, expanding Globe Hill. Um, but we are not going outside of our current footprint at this time. Closure and reclamation, so our current closure plan is approved by the Division of Natural Resources, and we hold a three hundred and thirty-five million dollar bond with the state. Um, our post-mining land use is range lands and wildlife habitat. We'll go in and slope and contour for stability, uh, apply topsoil, followed by seeding, and then try, we're currently trialing that through concurrent reclamation, which we do talk about pretty frequently. Our Q-three community investment, we received nine applications requesting four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, we approved six of those, totaling forty-five thousand, so things that we approved included Teller Senior Coalition, Woodland Park Senior Organization, um, another investment in Teller County Fairgrounds, the VFW Post Sixty Fifty-One, the Vietnam Veteran Memorial Wall specifically, for the Salute to American Veterans Rally, and then Community of Carrying Childcare Facility. And then, we'll also review Q-four, so we received six applications totaling, um, requesting ninety-two thousand dollars. We approved four of those. Um, for a total of seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars, um, things that we approved. Uh, Teller County Regional Animal Shelter, the Children's Literacy Center in Woodland Park, um, and then the Teller County Food Initiative that Bjorn mentioned at the start of our presentation. Just a couple highlights of our community partnerships. So one thing that we do annually is attend the Teller County Livestock Auctions, and we purchase animals and we process those, and historically, we, uh, raffle those off to employees who contributed to our legacy fund, our employee giving program. And with the sale and the transition, the legacy fund program ended, and so we still wanted to support four H and support the livestock auction. So we purchased animals and took that meat, um, to local food banks, um, contributed those to, so it was approximately a thousand pounds, if I'm not mistaken, it's a, it was a thousand sixty-three pounds exactly. Um, and took those to the, the food pantries. And then another community partnership I'd like to highlight was, um, our partnership with T-Cross. So their carehouse is, uh, kind of like a satellite facility located in Woodland Park, um, and they use it for training, um, they use it to allow shelters' pets to get out of the shelter for the day, um, they use it for adoption meet and greets, things like that. Um, and so their fence was, um, in need of some repairs, and so they came to us with an ask, and we were more than happy to support that, and we also sent, um, some of our employees and their families to repair the fence. Uh, you know, I thought I could do my fence myself, and I've learned, um, I don't want to do that. Um, so employees contributed a combined sixty-four volunteer hours, um, to support that, and then, um, we also, so we funded the fence, um, kenneled doors, and then new paint, um, for the kennel flooring, so to keep it sanitary and safe for those, those shelter pets, and so it's expected to benefit more than five hundred people and their pets annually, so. And then I also wanted to give you an update on our Community Development Committee interest forum. As you know, I presented about this back in August at the city councils and at the open house. Um, so we were recruiting volunteers to serve on this committee to help lead, um, community investment projects, um, with CCNV. So our recruitment took place from August of twenty-five to, to October. Um, so we have six interested community members for the Victor and Goldfield, um, committee, so we'll move forward with them. Uh, we are still looking for more Cripple Creek volunteers, so that, um, we only have three currently. I'd like five to six, um, if at all possible, so we'll leave this open for a few more weeks. Um, so if you're interested, please reach out and let me know. Any questions for me?
We're still a community member.
So, we have it on our Facebook page. We took out ads in the paper. I'll probably run another ad, um, and I'll get some flyers up, um, specifically for Cripple Creek.
You know, we should fire you seven.
Yeah, thank you.
We updated a little on the dust, since you're here, kind of what we talked about.
Yeah, absolutely.
So they have two monitors. I mean, council's asked me that. I have received that response. They have two dust monitors, one's here.
Poverty Gold.
Poverty Gold, yeah. And the other one's over at Victor.
Yep.
And they do monitor, and you have some, what's his name? I'm sorry, I missed his name. He said, come visit me.
Yes, Tony Maderes.
Oh, he's gonna come and see if he can give me more information. They have all the reports, but I understand you can't read the reports unless you know how to be.
They're very technical reports, and so he's the expert, and so, yeah, he's happy to come meet and explain that. They are public reports, so.
So I'll meet with him, see what information he can give, and then I'll report to you.
Awesome.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing it up, because we don't know what we don't know, so, thank you. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, guys. Okay, moving on to presentations, we have Black Hills Energy.
Good evening. My name is John Behill. I'm with Black Hills Energy, Public Affairs Manager for Colorado Electric. And, uh, on the screen, hopefully, we have you. Looks like he's on, um. I have Adam Traviso. He is the Operations Manager for our Colorado Electric Territory as well. Um, eh, thank you for having us tonight. Uh, really, we're here to add the request of, of Jeff Moser to, um, chat with you a little bit about a program um, that, that we're gonna be rolling out, and we started, um, earlier this year. Uh, talking with our, um, emergency responders, our offices of emergency management for each of the counties where we serve, and, um, started talking to them a little bit about wildfire safety and prevention. Uh, part of what we talked about was the things that we're doing to prevent wildfires, so things like, um, vegetation management, keeping the lines and keeping the, the right-of-way clear, um, testing field equipment, replacing equipment, and, um, eh, you know, just inspecting assets in the field on a regular basis. But we also use this opportunity, um, to introduce, uh, a new concept. It's a concept that's new to us and new to many utilities across the country. And that's what we're gonna spend a few minutes talking with you about tonight. Uh, next slide, Adam. Um, so, I want to start by saying, at, at Black Hills Energy, our first priority is the safety of the communities and the people that we serve. And, uh, we take that very seriously. And so, this emergency public safety power shut-off initiative or plan is, um, is something that's designed to um, shut off power when conditions are ripe, that our, our, um, electric grid or our assets might become a source of ignition. The, the intent is, um, is of course to, uh, to reduce the risk to the communities that we serve, and, uh, we do that only in a very thoughtful manner. Um, I can tell you, there's a number of different triggers that we look at, anything from fuel moisture to, uh, sustained wind speeds. Um, you know, and multiple other factors, um, and all those things will be looked at kind of in totality, and, and the decision, if it's made, will be made based on those things. The one thing I do like to highlight is that a red flag warning, so you see those pretty frequently. I know we've had a few already the last few weeks, uh, those are not a trigger for a public set of power safety, public, uh, public safety power shut-off. That's a tongue twister. Um, so when you see that, just know that that doesn't mean that your power's gonna be shut off. We do have an operational response for that. We do change the way that our, that our system operates, but that doesn't necessarily in and, in and of itself mean that we would be in a public safety power shut-off. Um, this, this, um, program is designed, um, to be, um, data-driven, as I mentioned. So we're monitoring weather five days out, twenty-four hour windows, five days out. And, uh, in addition to a service that's provided to us, uh, we have a, um, meteorologist that's on staff that can help us interpret that data. We need help interpreting that, and then we actually also installed, um, eleven different weather stations here in Fremont, Teller, and Custer County, um, so that we could better understand places that we felt like we had blind spots in the information that we were receiving. And I was talking to the fire chief earlier tonight, we did make all of that information, that data, available as publicly viewable for our, um, first responders. And he told me today that, you know, he, what, he looks at it regularly, so I'm glad to know that they're using that and that it's a benefit to the community. Um, but like I said, we look at things like sustained high gusts, low humidity, uh, low, uh, fuel moisture levels, all those things. Um, and so those are the things that are gonna drive the decision if we have to make it. Uh, next slide, Adam. So this is, um, this graphic is really just kind of an example, and this is not gonna be perfect, but I'm gonna be trying to walk through how we anticipate the emergency public safety power shut-off process. So on the far left there, you see the monitoring phase. That's what we're doing every day, uh, right now. Um, and that we'll continue to do, so we're in the early detection phase, continually monitoring those reports. Um, if the data suggests that we might have, um, a need for a public safety power shut-off, then, uh, we will assemble a team internally. Uh, that team will be, um, looking more closely at that data. They'll be the, the team that's, uh, responsible for making the decision. And once we are in an active event kind of level, if you will, or what's that active, that active event team is, has been created, that's when we're gonna start talking to our first responder, the Emergency Management Office and the, the fire chiefs and, um, and even some of the local, probably nonprofits, Red Cross, um, Aspen Mountain Center, some others. Um, the, the intent here is, if you look at this, I mentioned that we're looking five days out. In a perfect world, we would know five days ahead of time, that we would, and we'd be standing up this, this, uh, structure five days. Um, at this point, we are not talking to the public. We're just talking to you all, and we're talking to our first responders, letting you know it's possible. Um, the second stage is a watch stage, so that's when we've determined that, uh, a public safety power shut-off, uh, might be necessary, and when we get to that point, that's when we're gonna start talking to the public. In the best of all worlds, like I said, you would expect maybe a two to three day, um, window of opportunity to start talking to the public about that. Um, again, we know that weather changes quickly, so I, I know that that's not gonna be perfect, but that's already forty-eight to seventy-two hours to, uh, to start notifying the public. Uh, at the end of that, as you get so closer to three, uh, we'll hit, um, a point where we actually start staging crews to places that, uh, we believe that we have some, some risk. Um, those crews will be ready to, uh, to de-energize power lines, and we'll start communicating on a more regular case. We'll be talking, uh, to the public, and we'll be telling them, you know, in the next one to four hours, you can expect to see your power shut off. So there'll be in a, in a sense of urgency, um, in the messages that we're sharing. And then, in the event of a, uh, that we have to call the public safety power shut-off, we enter, you know, phase, between phase three and six there, and there's really four stages to that. Um, the first of that, of those milestones is the de-energization phase, and that's when we have crews going out. We have identified circuits that we have concerns about, and we'll be removing the fuses so that, uh, so that that power, uh, doesn't cause some ignition. Uh, the next stage, and this is, it's really different, and I do want to stress this, this is different than anything else that we've experienced, that you've experienced before. Most of the time, you have something hit a line, it goes down, we come out, we fix it, you had no warning, but on the other side, you had some delay, and we got that out there as quickly as possible. We fixed it, it's good. In this instance, we're gonna be giving lots of, as much warning ahead of time as we can, because weather's unpredictable, and this is a weather-driven event. So when we choose to de-energize power lines, we can't re-energize until the weather, um, normalizes, until it makes it safe to do that. And then, once we do, um, see the weather clear, and we feel like we're in a position that we're able to re-energize the lines, that's a process. And that process involves going out and looking at every foot of those lines, making sure that there's not damage, making sure that there's not vegetation or trees or other things caught up in the lines, fixing damage when we find it, um. You know, replacing equipment, all those sorts of things, before we can then go back out and re-energize that line safely. And so, what we've been talking to agencies about, and the reason we're talking to you tonight, and which, we're gonna be talking more with our communities, is this is gonna be a very different experience, and we're asking agencies to think about preparing for days of being without power. It could, it, we're not saying it's going to happen, it could happen that way. You know, how weather is, it's very unpredictable. And then finally, when we get to that, when we get through the restoration phase, we will begin to, um, communicate that we have all, we're all clear. We're back, we resume normal operations. If you're a customer and you still don't have power, you should contact us, because there's likely something else that's a problem that wasn't related to the. that wasn't related to the public safety power shut off. Oftentimes, what that means for customers, if you have, um, you know, the, uh, the mask on your home that brings the, uh, distribution line to your house, if that's damaged, that is actually a customer, uh, customer or homeowner's responsibility. It's not ours. And so frequently, those third things are damaged and they're just not aware of. So again, anyway, it gives us an opportunity to go out and look and make sure that it's not our system that's the problem. Um, go ahead and go to the next slide. So I don't want to spend a lot of time here. We, we really use this when we talk to our first responders, but this is that big P backwards, I guess it's a forward P on the left-hand side is kind of all of our process. But more importantly, and this is the takeaway, um, we're going to go into an incident command structure. The reason we talk about it that way is because that's something first responders know a lot about. They use a similar structure when they're responding. And so we go into this incident command structure and we will stay in that mode until, until we receive the all clear. And again, the important part is that, you know, I just want to emphasize, well, we, once we stand this up is when we're starting to talk to you and the other agencies. But it's before we start talking to public. Uh, next slide, Adam. Um, so for, from a communication perspective, and this is the time, if anybody's got a phone, um, if you'd like to pull it out, that QR code will take you to our wildfire safety page. Um, it will tell you, give you some more details about our wildfire mitigation plan. Um, it'll also give you the opportunity to update your, um, emergency contact information. This is something we've been trying to stress with our customers. We've been sending emails, um, we've been sending some, some bill, uh, messaging. Uh, I think the last email went out in September. Um, just encouraging people to be prepared, be prepared, make sure that we have your contact information correct. Make sure that we know your, your, um, your contact preferences. Um, if you have a landline, you'd rather be connected by text, you can certainly do all those things. And I like to say at this slide, I'd like to remind everybody that, um, we don't take texting lightly. That's not something we do very often at all. And so it would be only entered emergency that we text them our customers. Uh, next slide, Adam. Thank you. And then there's just a, a variety of different, uh, images here, but there's a lot of different ways that we're going to start communicating with the public. You know, when we do start communicating that, uh, that, uh, PSPS is, uh, is possibly going to occur. It's going to include phone calls, emails, texts, social, social messages. Uh, we're going to be communicating to media outlets so that they get on the news channels. Um, our website is obviously a source of information. And then, you know, when we can talk directly to customers, that's probably the most effective. Um, but this is where we're exploring as we work with the, um, emergency responders. How else do we do it? Is there a reverse nine-one-one capability? Is there a way that we, that your community prefers to be talked to? I know that a lot of our rural communities, um, they don't want to be on social, they don't want to be connected different platforms. And so it is a little bit of a challenge and we've heard that a lot, but. Um, so those are just some of the examples, but, uh, there, there are always that, that we're going to be communicating with our customers. Um, last slide, Adam. And, and so this is just a summary. Again, um, safety is our highest priority. And if there's a takeaway here, I just want to emphasize this is a last resort measure. Um, this is not something that we, that we do on a whim. We are used to turning, keeping the power on, not turning it off. So certainly, it's an uncomfortable place for us. It's an uncomfortable place for our customers. Um, we're going to continue. We have November tenth. We have kind of a, they call it a tabletop. It's not really tabletop. It's more of a readout, but we're where, uh, we've invited, uh, the fire chief and the emergency managers. We're actually going to Canyon City because it's kind of the midpoint between Custer, Teller, and, uh, Fremont County. Um, they've, they've agreed to host and we're going to in-person walk through scenarios, share with them. And this is how it evolves. These are our inflection points. These are where we'll be making decisions. This is how we're going to be communicating with you. What are we missing? What are the holes? And, and so we know it's not going to be perfect. We know that we can learn together, but we also know that it's not just a electric electricity issue. It is a community issue and it's going to take so, uh, we're definitely committed to being engaged with them. And if you've got suggestions on how we can continue to inform, you know, circle that as well. Um, that's the, um, extent of the formal presentation that you have Adam and I here to answer any questions that you have.
I've got one, um. How would someone? I rent my electric bill is in my landlord's name. How would I be able to get on the list?
Yeah, that is a great question. The answer to that is I would speak with your landlord. They have the ability. We have multiple fields. Um, you could be listed as a person of interest and they could have your contact information there. So I would talk to your landlord and they can do it either through the portal online or they can call in and get you added.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, and, and I'm sorry, may I, Mrs.? Has this model been implemented in other areas?
Uh, so we are doing this across all three of the territories that, that we serve electric in, um, all three of the states. Uh, but no, we haven't had to do it yet. Um, I, I think you might have seen recently Excel warned that they might have to just a couple of weeks ago, and then they did not have to, have to activate that. Um, but this is, this is fairly new to the industry. And it's been most tested in California. Um, as you know, they've had a number of wildfires.
So is this something that could be implemented? I mean, like in a snow event or wind or, or is this a fire?
So this is primarily. Yeah, I, I get that question a lot. This, this proactive shut off is going to be more driven by wind speeds, fuel moisture. It is about wildfire. Um, those storm events, um, our system is designed to handle those events. There are instances when you get really heavy snows and we can't do anything about that. And those are just regular, just.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that's, that was my question.
Yeah, and just, um, hours versus days, obviously, that, you know, completely changes. And I'm just thinking, you know, when you're listing like the different agencies, like I worked with the school district and we lost all of our food in the fridge and the freezers, um, during the snowstorm, just because of the lack of power. So I think just having that communication of in preparedness. Um, and, and I just want to just to back up to the snowstorm, I just want to commend Black Hills for the work that was done to get the power back on because I know it, well, I heard that they had to walk in by foot because the snowmobiles weren't getting through and they were going through four and a half feet of snow. And so, um, yeah, but we're in wildfire country, so.
Could, could this have, uh, I mean, if this was in place and we were able to use it for a snow event, could that have prevented us being down for so long as we were? I mean, I know they said that it was too much weight on the line and it touched and tripped a, tripped a fuse and they had no idea where it was at or where. I mean, could have shut down, have prevented that?
But, uh, what do I ask? Adam, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, sure. Good evening. Um, so to answer your question, um, unfortunately, no, as John said, this PSPS is a really proactive safety measure. And, you know, whether we practically de-energize it, um, as John mentioned earlier, part of our restoration process is to go through and look at every piece of that line, review all of the equipment, make sure we don't have any damage. So in the, uh, case of that storm, because of the heavy snowfall, we likely still, we would have still had the same damage on that line. Um, so it would have been the same result.
Yep. So I had a question regarding that. Is there, is there a loop that's goes through there or a second line in case this happens and it, did it need to be repaired or has it been repaired?
Yeah, so we had a, a couple of issues with that transmission line during that storm and, and that has since been repaired. It has been.
So John, I think you told me this is not transmission. This is more distribution shut off, not really transmission shut off. Is that correct?
Yeah, Adam, do you want to take that?
Sure. Yep. So that's correct. This is, uh, more focused on the distribution system. Um, so as a proactive measure, as part of the emergency public safety power shut off, we will not be de-energizing the transmission lines. Um, this is strictly focused on the specific areas that are in that high wildfire risk area. Um, and focused on de-energizing the distribution. So opening fuses, reclosers, line equipment, um, and not at the transmission level.
Well, Adam, I guess I have another question. Uh, since your transmission comes directly into our substation in Cripple Creek. I know we have grass. We're not a wild, we're not a forest. So the distribution system, there's a possibility the distribution system in Cripple Creek would not be affected. This is more out in the county where you have forests and higher fire dangers. I'm just a question.
I mean, there's the potential that it could impact parts of Cripple Creek. Um, as, as all of you are well aware, that area is uh, in that higher risk area. Um, so there's the potential is that, you know, we would obviously work with the meteorologists and as part of that incident command structure, um, trying to pinpoint specific areas and not take out multiple areas unnecessarily. And really trying to identify where is the risk and just focus on de-energizing that area.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I can, not maybe, maybe not put words in Adam's mouth, but what we've been talking about is we're taking a very surgical approach. We will, we only want to de-energize what we have to.
Thanks, John.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Well, okay, moving on to new business agenda item A, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero seven prohibiting the use of gray water and the installation of gray water treatment works within the city of Cripple Creek. Is Jonathan?
Of course not. Frank is Jonathan. I think we covered this last time. Jonathan did a great job on, if y'all have any questions, but just so the community is here, uh, in years past, the state legislature, uh, passed something on gray water that allowed you didn't have to take any action if you didn't want to have it in your community. But since, I guess, a lot of communities took no action. Now they've reversed the law and if you don't want to put gray water, you have to opt out. So in their infinite wisdom, now we have to take action to opt out of it instead of just leave us alone. But, uh, anyway, uh, these are expensive systems. It's not, I think Jonathan spent that last time, we're not really against people gray water systems, but we don't have the capacity with our current inspections and codes. We're not there yet. So if this became something that, you know, citizens came to the council and our staff and wanted to implement something and go to the cost of putting in a gray water system, this isn't unhooking your uh, washing machine and running it out on the ground. That's not the, that's not a permitted, uh, system. It's an expensive system. If you're building a new house, it's probably, it, it's cost, but you can plum your house for the system. But to take a house that's already built and redo all your plumbing in the house to make it, you know, your, uh, your washing machine and some of those devices that are gray water classified through this system is not going to be cheap to redo a house. It's already out there. So our staff's recommendation is for the council currently to opt out. The council in the past did not opt in, didn't do anything. So we're just wanting to keep it where we have control going in the future. As I said, right now, we don't have the capacity to implement this or have the inspections. We don't have that uh, knowledge yet on how to do these systems. So this is the second reading. So council, uh, staff's recommending to adopt ordinance two, twenty twenty-five oh seven.
Any questions or discussion?
So, since his second reading, do you have to do a quick?
Yes, please. All right. So at this time, I will open this up to public comment. Is there anybody who would wish to speak in favor? Anyone who wishes to speak against? As there is no public comment, can I get a motion to close public comment?
Motion to close public comment.
I'll second.
Vote, please.
Councilor Henry.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yep.
Councilor Norman.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes. All right, additional. All right, can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion. We approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh seven.
Second.
Vote, please.
Councilor Henry.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yep.
Senator Bowman.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes. Thank you. Agenda item B, consider option to purchase agreement with Sandstone Housing. Jeff Moser, Director of Special Projects.
Good evening, uh, city council. I appreciate the opportunity to present this to you. We tabled this, this, uh, uh, item for the last couple of meetings. Uh, the original memo, which is what you have, includes a license and agreement, which we are not going to proceed with, uh, at, at this time. So we are just talking about the, um, option to purchase. The option to purchase is a document needed by Sandstone Housing for their li-tex, their low income housing tax credit application. They need to show ownership of the property. And what this does is it gives them the option to purchase, which means they do have the option to own the property should the the, uh, the project go forward. And at some point down the road, they will be purchasing, uh, from this, this, this the city or working out some other type of, uh, land lease agreement with the city. So there is control there. So that allows them to move forward. So you've got the option in front of you. Um, if there's any questions, uh, their, their attorney worked with Alicia really well, um, to come up with this purchase agreement. So we're pretty satisfied with, with what's, uh, in front of you. So staff's recommendation is to approve this option of purchase, purchase agreement with Sandstone Housing LLC.
When is that li-tex application due? Is it?
Their letter of intent is due, uh, in, in December and then February is the app, uh, application start, I think. No, I think it's due February second.
And just for the community's understanding, this is the property that Sandstone is looking to build a forty-five unit, the multi-family unit, um.
Right. This is the property the city purchased from C dot, um, over a year ago, just over a year ago. Um, on Galena, uh, between, uh, Galena and, and, uh, highway sixty-seven. So right in front or south of the C dot, uh, building. Mountain to the, to the east and, and the Gold King or the Golden Nugget Hotel to the west. So it is going to be, they, we did have a conversation, uh, because it is an entry point to the city. So they are aware that the city is very conscious about what the exterior is going to look like. So we'll be working on that as they move forward. So they've done some good work with us with parking lots. Parking is the issue here. Uh, it takes up a lot of space. Uh, so we're working through that and, and they're going to, right now, their plans are fifty-four parking spots for forty-five units, which is above what's required. But we need it handicap spots. So we'll need five of those will be handicapped. So you don't want to count those in, in your match. You want to add them.
Can just confirm my understanding for the purchase price of one hundred dollars?
Was it one hundred or a thousand? I thought it was a thousand. Is it?
I'm looking at.
Second.
It's true. Oh, I'm sorry. The option became an amount of one hundred is, okay. So, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Well, it would be nice to get apartments that were delivered.
Yeah, and just to let folks know, so the, the benefit of the city owning the property and doing it the way we are with a low sale price is that they're using it. The full value of that property as cash contribution from the city. So that helps in their request for grants and their li-tex application that the city is giving cash value uh, to this project. And that's, that's very important because they want to know the city's bought in.
And I would like to mention the fact that Sandstone, um, the individuals involved are very, very knowledgeable in li-tex. Um, I am not at all.
Yes, it's, the, the li-tex allows you to come in and be a first time applicant. Uh, fortunately, these guys are not. Um, they will, you can be a first time applicant, but everybody that's on your team better have done li-tex before. So their attorneys have done it before, their architects have done it before, their, um, purchasing folks have done it before. Their general contractor is a li-tex general contractor. So everybody understands the requirements of li-tex.
Any questions or discussion? All right, can I get a motion, please?
We'll make a motion to per, uh, to approve the optional purchase agreement with Sandstone Housing.
I'll second.
Vote, please.
Councilor Henry.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yeah.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Councilor Bowman.
Yes.
Thank you very much, council. This is great for the city, so.
Um, agenda item C, consider approval for a lease for three zero eight West Golden Avenue, Cripple Creek, Colorado, housing for the Butte Theater actors. Um, Lauren, before you present, um, we have one council member that does need to.
Yes.
Excuse myself.
Yes. I'm a mayor, if I may. Chief, your flashlight.
Your flashlight's on your phone.
Especially I wasn't going to see nothing. Flashing me in my eye.
Ten to bears.
Okay, alright, wonderful, um, good evening, Mayor Durham and council. Um, tonight I am presenting the approval or requesting approval of a short-term lease for additional actor housing. For the production of Light Christmas, um, coming up quite soon here at the Butte Theater, um, it is a larger-than-average cast, um, it is uh. Uh, an issue we knew we were going to run into, um, of needing to to do that show properly to have more people on the Butte stage than we normally would. Um, so because of that, we did need to add an additional house in, um, to be able to properly house everyone for the extent of the co, of the theater um contract. So, um, we went searching for a two-bedroom house here in town because as always, it is incredibly important for us to. Have something that is walkable to the theater, because so many of our actors are from out of town, are flying in. Um, and so we were able to find um a property at three oh eight West Golden. And so I'm looking to um have the approval to um enter into that short-term lease.
Is it just for, is it just for a month, is that?
It's for the months of November and December, mhm.
How many total, um?
I think more than four.
Um, so the total cast is fourteen, we're not housing all of those people, um, we do have. Um, one cast member who is a local resident, so we do not have to have to house her, and then we have a um. Uh, a child actor in the show who would, it lives in Manitou and will mainly be commuting up with with her mother. Um, so, um, if they ever, if we have weather and stuff and they need to stay up here, then I'll deal with it and get them a hotel or whatever, but. As of right now, um, it is uh twelve housed actors and then addition um production personnel as needed um through the rehearsal process.
Well, I feel the extra we're spending on the rent is definitely going to be made up in the ticket sales because you made a very wise choice on our Christmas show.
Thank you.
I don't know, guys.
Yeah.
I I had a really hard time finding, it was the only one I could find, sorry.
Say it's a very nice.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, is it one person per bedroom?
One person per bedroom, yes.
Well, and and you're right, the proximity pieces.
Yeah, it's huge, yeah, and a lot of what I was finding was like. Five or more miles outside of town and I just couldn't, um, I just, I couldn't go with that unfortunately.
Yeah, I think that it's open.
Yeah, I know, I couldn't believe it, it was like, yeah, it was, it, the timing actually worked out perfectly, so I, it was. Kind of aligned perfectly, so I matched it if I could.
Since it is Jessica that signed, so this we can afford.
Can I make a motion, please?
I make a motion, we approve the lease for three oh eight West Golden for the use of Butte Theater actor houses.
Well, second.
Vote, please.
Council Engineering?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Yes.
Mayor. Yes. And I just want to say congratulations on the Halloween show, I went um Saturday night and night before it closed and it was fun, it was so much fun.
Thank you.
So that was very, very welcome.
I'm glad, I'm glad you enjoyed it, it was fun for me too. It was awesome, thank you, I appreciate it.
I will bring Cody back before. So we are going to take a brief break before the executive session, um, for bathroom purposes, so. All that to say, um, we will adjourn the meeting after the executive session, but we will need everybody to exit the room for the executive session, but I'm not going to read that, should I read the motion now?
Make a motion.
Should I do the motion now? I can do that. Alright, I move to go into the executive session, executive session pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash dash six dash four zero two four, one subsection E. To determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators. And two subsection B for a conference with legal counsel for the purpose of receiving legal advice. On specific legal questions all related to potential agreements for the construction of childhood education and care facility. So, second.
Second.
Oh. Alright, vote, please.
Council Engineering?
Yes.
Council Chief Scott?
Yep.
Councilwoman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Durham?
Yes.
By a second. Mayor's. Mayor's, mayor's the most, and here it says. Six twenty-five. She's got to run down and get the recorder. Five minutes, right?